Like you said, for the budget that we have, it's not that bad. I mean, it's not great, but when you spend it well spent, I think the outcome is okay.
I mean, the key is to making sure you have cash flow that's going to support emergency situations, and there will be emergency situations. Pregnant, you had a tornado roll through here several years back. Those types of events have been required some reserves to be able to accommodate the services that you're going to have to roll out, the overtime pay that you're going to have to pay first responders, things of that nature. Reserves are necessary, and we've got to build up reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Continuing with the audit report, if we turn to page 69. Which one? It's another independent auditor's report in here. This is on our yellow book opinion, since we did conduct the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, we are required to report on your internal controls. And this report states that we reviewed and assessed your internal controls. And we do have a couple of compliance findings, which we'll cover in the next couple of pages. Page 71. I mentioned the USDA note that we issued during the year. We do have the water and sewer projects that fall under the federal guidance, the uniform guidance for compliance, since they are federal funds. So we do have this independent auditor's report on compliance with the federal program. This is actually a clean opinion, but we do have some comments, some findings as a result of our audit. And so let's go to those. If we turn to page 76. 76 starts the schedule findings and question costs. And these are findings from the current year. Comment one, account reconciliation. This is actually somewhat of a repeat comment from last year. Last year, we had a lot of breakdowns and reconciliations with cash and receivables and payables. This year, we, as mentioned, we brought in a consultant, which helped with a lot of the reconciliations. The cash reps were spot on, they worked. And the consultant really helped management kind of work through those and figure out how the system works and getting a proper reconciliation. But we did have a comment similar to last year in the sense that we did find some unrecorded accounts payable to the tune of $195,000, which management had not recognized or recorded. And so we didn't really reconcile our accounts payable properly. And so as a result of audit procedures, we were able to identify that these items needed to be recorded. And so again, it's kind of a continuing comment, but this one's more narrowed into accounts payable, that we make sure that we're properly reviewing and assessing invoices after year end to make sure they're not related to transactions that happened during our fiscal year. Comment two, we talked about this when we looked at the budget, exceeding the approved budget. Obviously, there's a statutory requirement that we not overspend what council has authorized us to spend through the budget. And obviously, we overshot that by $484,000 during the fiscal year. That one, we have, we know what the correction is in the new fiscal year. We've turned on the system, we're monitoring it through the accounting system now before we issue POs. We're checking to make sure that we got a budget appropriations enough to cover the POs that we're issuing. That said, if we come next year with the same comment, there's something pervasively wrong with how we're handling the purchase order process. But we think we're going to get that corrected.
Okay. How many of the same issues that we have last year, do you know?
We'll cover those in a little bit, because we do have to address last year's comments. On page 77, top of 77, these are actually comments related to our federal compliance testing. So the USDA note, we obviously audited those transactions to make sure they were in accordance with the uniform guidance. The first one at the top there, we had an invoice, and this is actually a comment, repeat comment from last year, because we had the same situation. We double paid a vendor, $271,000 payment to a vendor, we paid them twice during the fiscal year. We identified that, and we actually, at the end of the fiscal year, we were waiting for a payment back from the vendor. But that said, the federal regs are pretty clear. We should be making payments on true transactions, and we shouldn't have double payment. We can have a system in place that allows for a double payment on an invoice.
Wouldn't that be caught each month when you kind of reconcile your books where your $271,000?
And I think they did catch it.
That would be a first play.
For us auditors and for the feds, it shouldn't be caught at the end of the month, it should be caught during the invoice prep process.
We've already paid this invoice. And the cop throwers will fall through.
Yeah, I mean, it was a breakdown in the accounts payable area, and obviously in the check process. So yeah, that would be the office responsible for it.
Have we gotten that money back?
At the end of, as of now, yes, that money has been received back.
We got it in a couple.
And that's your large, your vendor, Pepper Larson is the vendor that we're referring The second comment there on page 77, timing of vendor payments. So during our, so the feds say, look, if you're going to do a drawdown of federal funds, you should turn around and pay those funds out to vendors timely. Now, they don't define what timely is, but we do know that anything beyond a couple of days probably isn't timely. Anything over a week is probably not timely. We drew down some funds, and we held on to the money for about 26 days. That is not timely in most people's definition. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, Henrietta, some of that timing had to do something with the first comment.
So we noticed and had called and notified Pepper Larson that we had paid them twice. They had actually processed a second payment. And so Pepper Larson's financial department wanted to say, well, we'll give you credit for the payment that you sent ahead. But we said, no, we need to receive those funds back. And once we receive those funds back, we could reissue this second check. So we held those funds until we received those other funds back, and then we issued this one. And so we didn't want to triple pay them. So once we received that $247,000 overpayment back, because it was a double payment, then we issued that check. That was delayed, even though we had started the process. That was delayed, because we needed to do that. Because their account, actually their auditor was like, well, we could just give you credit. And we were like, no, we needed to do that. So they didn't understand where we had to issue and reissue, and that was the purpose of the delay.
Yeah, which is not uncommon. One problem usually compounds into several problems when we talk about compliance with using federal funds. At the bottom of 77, we have a third comment there, an unallowable transaction for $16,500. So the, one of the allowable transactions, when we issued the USDA note, well, let's go back. So to kick the program off, we issued tax notes last fiscal year, and then pending the closing on the USDA notes. And the tax notes were recorded in three areas. One, some of the money we're recording in the governmental funds, some of it was recorded in the water funds, and some of it was recorded in the sewer fund. We closed on the sewer fund loan during the fiscal year. And when we did that, we drew money out to pay off the tax note. What we did, though, was we drew $16,500 too much and applied that to tax notes that were residing within the water fund. And that was a no note for the feds, because the notes that we issued from USDA were specific for the water, for the sewer program. We had been closed down on the water funds, but we shouldn't have used the money that we drew from the sewer fund to pay the notes that were residing in the water fund.
Something you may, so we closed on the sewer funds, and we took a tax note of about $1 million that was supposed to pay for engineering fees, $600,000, I think, for sewer, $400,000 for water. When we received the funds, because it was a little contentious for us to get that fund, the staff had promised, Connie and I had promised, that when we received the reimbursement from the USDA, we would pay down the notes. Because I believe the conversation at the time was, we're not going to ever pay this money back. So when we received the amount, the amount that we received as a reimbursement, we sent it all to the tax note. However, some of that should have been reimbursement to ourselves, reimbursement for legal. And so we sent a bigger payment than what we said, so it was pre-rature payment on the water side. Because remember, I said, so we paid the whole engineering fee back and $16,000 early that we paid on the tax note that we didn't necessarily have to. And so that is the overpayment. But I think what staff is trying to do is when we receive that, what was it, how much was it?
$633,000.
Yes, when we received that, we sent that payment that we received for reimbursement to the USDA to pay off the tax note. Now, some of that was legal fees, and some of that was survey fees that we had encountered. But our purpose was we were trying to make sure that what we received back would do so. So when we received the next time in this budget, in right now, we closed on the water. And so we received the reimbursement back from the USDA for that. And so since I've already, I will have a credit of $16,000, whatever, to that, we're not going to send all those funds back. That was our first large payment that we made for the USDA. The majority of that was for that note that was for seven years, as now literally couldn't have, because that was one of the first notes. So we paid early, so we shouldn't have, and I apologize for that.
Well, some of that funding that we sent back, was it something that we used out of our general fund?
Yes.
So that would be part of the deficit that we have?
Yes, we would have had that fund, and so maybe it still in the hole, but it would have added to that deficit number, but yes. And our zealousness to pay that tax note.
Okay, thank you.
Page 78, comment there, reporting requirements finding. This one's, well, it's a federal comment only because we're required to send some monthly reporting to the federal government with regards to the USDA projects. When we asked to see the submission for those, we obviously had copies of what we sent to the feds, but we didn't have any record that we actually sent it to the feds. And when I say records, I mean a federal express receipt, something, a copy of an envelope with a stamp on it, something that indicate this was sent to the feds. And we should be keeping some record that we submitted. I believe those were sent federal express, if I remember correctly. But yet, we didn't have any other record of the tracking number or anything like that that could support that that following requirement was met. And the only reason we say to keep that is if the feds ever say they didn't get it, we can produce documents that show we actually submitted that. Yes, sir.
What was the amount that was sent?
It was not an amount, it was just reporting, monthly reporting is required to be spent as part of the grant agreement.
Basically, receipts for delivery of payments.
Like a certified letter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we don't have no record?
Well, what we had is we have like the FedEx bills, because we FedEx a lot of things, and most things we FedEx. But what he says is, there's a little sheet that you have to fill out. And so since he made that comment, we've been keeping the FedEx slip with a copy of the report attached to it. What staff are just keeping is that we had all the FedEx bills, and the only people we really FedEx to is the federal government. Though he wants an additional, the receipt that we fill out that it went to Ciggin or it went to Temple, wherever we have to send his reports, that is attached to the report that'll be proof of service when he comes to audit, to say, here's a report, and this is when we sent it, and match it there together. So we've made those changes.
It really is to cover you guys, too, just in case the feds say they didn't get something, you can produce documents and show you did send the required items. Then the last comment is on procurement standards. We don't have a procurement policy that documents how we're going to make purchases and go out for bid for contracts and that sort. And that is a requirement for the feds whenever you get federal awards, is to have a written procurement document, so.
Have we made that correction this year, or do we need to do that as a council?
We'll be doing that, and it's part of my manager letter that I'm mentioning in there and I'll cover that when we get to that part.
Okay, thank you.
So very quickly, starting on page 79, and I, Councilman Henshaw, I think this was your comment, do we have, or we looked at last year's comments to see if we corrected them or not. Page 79 to the end of the bound document is really that. It's the prior findings that we had, and I will very quickly go through these, since they were last year's comments, and I'll just let you know if you included it or not. So last year, municipal court, we had a server crash, and we identified that we weren't really servicing that server, it was kind of sitting outside of all the other servers that were being maintained in the sense of backups and, you know, maintaining to make sure we didn't lose data. We found out because we lost data, the servers crashed, and then we found out they weren't part of the maintenance schedule. And so that was a comment last year, and that since has been corrected. We do have, municipal court's activities are now part of the general maintenance for the computer systems. Full cash bank reconciliations, as I mentioned, last year, we did have problems with the reconciliations working and actually being properly reconciled. And if everyone remembers, that was one reason our audit last year was so delayed, was we couldn't get the cash reps to work. That was corrected during the fiscal year. You guys went ahead and brought in a consultant to kind of help Connie get the system set up properly, and that resulted in us being able to reconcile the bank accounts on a timely basis this year. Account reconciliation and review, as I mentioned, last year, we had a lot of areas where we had to comment here. This, however, is here.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
Okay. When you said that we had help for that, how much money did we spend on them?
That I don't know, and that would be in the fiscal year of 18.
Because that would be another unbudgeted.
That would be this year, no, we budgeted for it last year, but that would be in the current budget that we're in right now.
Yeah. Yeah, because he was in here February.
And how much did we budget?
We budgeted $10,000. $10,000.
Okay, thank you.
So the account reconciliations, last year, we had various accounts that were not reconciled properly, including the cash. This year, it's just the accounts payable. So we partially cleared this comment, but we do have a repeat on that for the accounts Page 80, last year, we had a comment on the forfeiture fund accounting. We're required to submit some reporting on our forfeiture accounts and reconcile those on a monthly basis, and last year, we were not. We do not, this comment was cleared, we did not have a similar comment related in this area. Traditionally fund reconciliations, again, we had some fiduciary funds that had been on the books for a while, we didn't really know what they were last year. Those have been cleared, those were cleared during the fiscal year, so we don't have a similar comment related to that. Last year, we had a comment on the Public Funds Investment Act, where we were not in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act. This year, we are in compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act, so that has been cleared. And then at the bottom of 81, debt service fund expenditures. Last year, we were running some capital lease payments through the debt service fund, and that is a, that was not an allowable transaction out of the debt service fund. We did not have, that comment has been cleared, we did not have that similar issue this year. Page 82, duplicate invoice payment, unfortunately, this is a repeat comment, and obviously, this year's transaction was much higher than last year's.
What page is that?
On page 82, top of page 82. Last year, we did the same thing, too, we paid a vendor twice, and we did it again this Accounts payable reconciliation, again, and this was really related to the USDA grants, it was a compliance finding. We did not have a similar compliance finding in the accounts payable with the USDA grant And then the last comment, we had, when we did our testing last year on the federal expenditures, there were some invoices or a hand invoice that we couldn't get support for a transaction. We eventually got the support by contacting the vendor and having them send us the invoice. This year, we didn't have that. All the invoices that we selected and tested, the support was available and on hand, so that comment was corrected. And with that, I will move on to the letters that we provide here, and very quickly on those, because a lot of the information is a repeat. The first letter, where the first paragraph starts with, we have audited the financial statements as the governmental activities, the business type activities, and the discreetly presented component unit. That letter is what we call our deficiency letter. And so because we had control weaknesses and findings and question costs, we're required to issue this letter. The comments in here, we've already looked at in the bound financial report, so I'm not going to draw our attention to this, to these comments again, so. Then the other letter that we passed out, which starts off with, we have audited the financial statements as the governmental activities and business type activities. It has quantitative aspects of accounting practices, kind of right below the first paragraph underlined. This is our required communication between the independent auditor and you, the council. There's a couple, one or two, actually, two things that I'll cover. One is on the second page, the corrected and uncorrected misstatements. And we've already talked about this, we did have a material correction that we had to book for accounts payable, the $195,000 that came about through our audit test work. And then it's a smaller issue, large dollar now, but actually, it's a small issue, is the warrants receivable, so you have tickets that you've issued and that have not been paid. And so you have a balance out there of unpaid warrants of $122,000 at the end of the fiscal year. That had not been recorded by management. We recorded that. I'd say it's not that big an issue. You take the accounts payable issue, when we booked that, it's a balance sheet transaction, and we're picking up expenditures. So it materially misstated your balance sheet and your income statement. The warrants receivable, because we don't recognize warrants until they're paid, it's really a balance sheet for balance sheet correction. And what I mean by that is we're booking an asset, and we're booking a liability for that. So it's a lesser degreed error than, let's say, the accounts payable, which affects your income statement. This $122 does not affect your income statement, but we did have to book that, and so I draw your attention to that. And then on the last page, and I think I've already mentioned this, compliance with the Public Funds Investment Act of the state of Texas, as part of the audit, we do audit your compliance with the act, and we found that the city complied with the act in all material respects. So with that, I will conclude and take any further questions that you have. I was trying to make this quicker, I'm sorry if it took longer than I took the paper.
I have a question.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
What do you think about our pension at the debt that we're in?
Yeah, let's look at that. So that's a good question. So if we could turn to, real quickly, a couple of pages I'm going to have you go to. Let's start with page 47 in the bound document. So 47, at the middle of the page, you have this change in net pension liability. And the first column is your total pension liability. What does the actuary say that you owe, and what were the changes from last year to this year? So last year, at the end of the fiscal year, you had $6.3 million in pension liability. And then through the actual analysis and the study that they did, they increased that to $6.9 million, which is the number at the bottom of that first column. Now, you guys are paying in, the city is paying in, the employees are paying into a trust fund. And so that second column is your assets that you have in the trust. And you started with $4.6 million in the trust, and you ended the year with $5.1 million. So the net of those two amounts is what your net pension liability is. And so that last column is the net between those first two columns, and you had a net pension liability last year of $1.6, and we ended with $1.7. So what does that mean? If we turn to page 57, real quick, it's the same information, this is a trending information, and eventually, it will build up to 10-year presentation. But 2016 is your planned year that we reported in your fiscal year 17 audit. And there's a number down there of 74% percentage of net position as a percentage of total net pension liability. 74% is not bad. So to answer your question, how are we doing on our pension liability? You are 74% funded, that's not bad for a city of this size. I have seen it as low as 63%, 62%. I've seen it as high as 100%, but those were very, very small cities, very small. We're talking less than 30 employees. They would be in the 95-plus range, and some of those at 100% funding. So to answer your question, 74% funding, you're doing pretty well.
So where do we get the rest of the 26%?
That is going to be based on your rates going forward. Now, this is off the record, you know, this is paper money to some extent, right? I mean, it's an actuary study to determine what your liability is at this point in time for future payments that you're going to have to make. The answer to that question, it's going to build up over the next 25 years. Now, will you ever get to 100% funding? Probably not, because you're bringing in new employees, employees will retire, they come out of your system, they move on to other cities. So you're always going to have this fluctuation, and so you're never going to be fully funded. But that said, TMRS does look at your funding percentage to determine what your rates as a city will be. So you're in a good area. I would assume your TMRS funding rates are either on the low end or close to the low end of what other cities are having to take into the system.
Right, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have a couple of questions? When we had the auditors 15, 16, you suggested that we get her help and add a person to help bring it up, which we did. You did both. Did that help?
It helped a lot, and the consultant helped a lot. Bringing those additional resources in during the fiscal year helped. Obviously, we were, the cash reconciliation work, which has been a problem, again, since I've been associated with the city for the last couple of years. I've got light handles. So that did help. The nature of our journal entries, as a result of our audit, now, I know we have this $195,000 accounts payable, and we've talked about how we need to kind of close the gap on not identifying that with Connie and Henrietta. But the nature of the journal entries was not as severe as it has been. If you remember last year, I can't even, I said, I think we posted something like 82 journal entries. We still had 30-plus journal entries, and the number by itself should maybe alarms you, but the nature of the journal entries were not... you, but the nature of the journal entries were not audited finding journal entries in the sense that we didn't do an audit procedure and said, oh, we're out of balance here, we need to adjust these numbers. Most of those 30-plus entries were support brought to us by management.